Good afternoon, everyone. It is 12 o'clock and I would like to call the Peoria Public School Board of Education meeting for July 1, 2025 to order. Madam Secretary, would you please call the robe?
Mrs. Kostic.
Yeah.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Ivory? Mrs. Rose?
Present.
Mrs. Ross?
Yeah.
Dr. Wilson?
Here.
We have six present.
Present. There is six and Mr. Ivory is on his way. He just called not too long ago. May we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our same art boards from Elise Ford Allen and from Richwoods. Thank you so much for your artistic contributions. Awards and recognition and that will be with Mrs. Garcia. Is she here now?
Mariela.
Okay, Maria, may you please come forward? Thank you.
Marvin is not here yet, but I will give you a quick update on how we did at Nationals. There were 41 states, 198 schools, 1,189 entries and 18 divisions, and we took six students. We received five awards, two fifth grade places in oratory and declamation, a quarterfinalist in storytelling, and also a octo-finalist in declamation. And we also have the youngest national HI champion in record for advantage communications from Tree When Marvin pulled it. I think our story goes beyond these wins, though. A lot of our students really did put in a lot of work to be able to not only qualify for the speech and debate tournament, but also excel in it. None of our students bottomed, so that means that they were never lower than their competitors. They were never at the last place. And I cannot wait for you all to see what we're going to do next year because thank you again for approving our program one more year. I know that when we talk about Peoria, we often think about the heart of the Midwest, and I think we did that really well at this tournament. Again, I'm sorry Marvin is not here at this time, but I'm sure he would have a lot to say to you all, too, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate all of your leadership and your hard work, and so thank you so much for going the extra mile because we can imagine traveling with them students, there's no roadmap to it.
No, it was a lot of ironing, a lot of doing their hair in the morning, but it was a lot of fun and, you know, they all are watching a little different. Four of them are going to the Bradley speech and debate camp in the morning.
Nice.
So I know they got funding from Sterling and then advantage communication assistance for the next two to go. So we're not stopping in middle school, we'll help the students go to high school as well.
Love you. Thank you. We certainly appreciate that.
So you said Marvin was on the way?
Yes, Marvin is actually the youngest student to ever win humorous interpretation. He was the first place winner in that category.
So he's not here?
Unfortunately, no. I offered a ride, but...
I just also just want to piggyback on what President McConnell said. This is a fantastic program and really enjoy the work that you do with our students. And thank you to Dr. Karat as well for being a champion for this. So that's awesome. Thank you.
Of course.
Does anybody else have any observations? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Our next item is our district presentation from Director of School Safety, Damario Boone.
I just wanted to say good evening, good afternoon. Thank you, guys, for having us come up. I really wanted to do this update. I know it's a middle school update, but really this is kind of a district update with school safety. The team does so many things great and ahead of the curve a lot of times with other school districts that we don't realize how lucky we are at Peoria Public Schools. We are, when I go to other districts and train their staff or talk to their principals, we are 50 years plus ahead at Peoria Public Schools. So this first slide here, one of the things that we have for the first time, thanks to the board, is our full staffing of school safety. This will be the first time with our final hires here in the summer that we'll have that full staff. This alleviates a lot of issues so we can keep our officers in those middle schools a lot more. Schools won't have to have those issues due to SRO pools for, you know, morning winding in the high schools. Evolve, which we'll be talking about next, will alleviate a lot of that, so it cuts down having to use manpower. Low staffing numbers, again, when officers are out, injuries, sick, you have to pull from some other place, that will be cut down. Also with crossing guard replacements, if crossing guards are sick and we have to have an officer out there, and then all other significant events that happen in those buildings, we have to pull officers from specific sites before, but now this year, we're a lot stronger. So this real-time QR code door checks, this is something that we're going to be working on so that the officers that are in those middle schools, those primary schools that, you know, didn't have officers the first time, when they go around and check doors, we want to make sure that in real time we can see that those doors were scanned, they were checked, that this door was left ajar, if we need to send out a memo, if we need to talk to staff about that. If there's a door that because of heating and cooling, they expand and contract, some doors don't shut all the way, we can put those help desk tickets in there and we can track all of that, but really that QR helps us with accountability for our officers as well. This 911 RTS emergency alert system, this is something new that we piloted with Peoria Police Department, Peoria Police Dispatch, and Siren GPS. Spent a lot of time meticulously geo-fencing every single Peoria Public Schools site, be it schools, be it our stadium, all of those sites, we geo-fenced them. So if there's a 911 call that happens near that area, any significant event that happens near that area, we get a text message and an email, every officer will get that and we will be able to respond a lot quicker and assess those situations and have more accuracy with that as well. The clear backpack policy, I know that's something that's going to be discussed today. If we explore that clear backpack policy, that reduces the concealment of dangerous or prohibited items. These pictures that are attached here, every year I have the officers collect all of the, what we call evidence boxes of things that are, you know, caught walking in, things that are caught out of lockers. You'll see, you know, the toy guns, that some of the stuff we got there, drugs, those boxes are full of vapes. I think that box was probably three or four pounds by the end of the year of all the vapes that we caught and confiscated, and a lot of those were at our middle schools as well. So when you're exploring that, keep those in mind. Also Cartwell Therapy Services, Dr. Karat was really instrumental in trying to get these therapeutic services for families of students. She kind of got me involved with Cartwell as well. We had some open spots to get families in there. We quickly filled those spots, we got more spots, and a lot of these are not just students getting services, parents are asking for services for themselves as well to be able to help their students, and you'll see that data there. We had 316 total referrals with 37 students that have since graduated, but they are still in those therapeutic services as well. The primary middle school presentations this year, our task, our command staff, with making sure every middle and primary school had presentations on anti-bullying, gun violence and prevention, and mutual respect in the law. We hit all of those classrooms up, and 88% of the students that took that pre- and post-test showed improvement after those presentations. The principal one-on-ones we have every year anyway, as it relates to school safety, but now that we have officers in buildings that we've never had officers in before, we have those principal one-on-ones so we can kind of talk about, you know, what is the role of the SRO, what's the goal of the principal in that building, because we don't want the officers to be the heavy. We want them to be a complement and a supplement to the building, and we want to make sure we align that whenever we put SROs in those buildings. So really a conclusion, I didn't want, you know, school safety to just be things and stuff. You know, you can put bulletproof glass and, you know, doors that lock and this and that, but we have that in spades. The things that we're ahead of is making sure we do preventative measures and we bake things into the system that help with school safety and prevention. I know Cap kind of had some, something on that one.
One of the things I'm particularly excited about with the achieving of full staff is, and we don't have a slide for it per se, but it's definitely one of our greatest assets in my opinion, is the relationships that we build with the students on a daily basis, and this can only be enhanced moving forward in these efforts. So it's those types of things that lead to, you know, the information that you see, you know, some of the things that you saw on the table from the earlier slide. So that's what I'm really excited about, and it's a constant perpetual thing that we do. We don't ever rest on trying to strive to improve on these relationship-building skills. We actually have, just prior to the first day of the year, we'll have our annual CPI training, which we do a day-long focus on those de-escalation skills, which is, and I'm a little bit biased, but I think that's one of the best things that we have, you know, on our side.
All right. I just want to say thanks. We hear from parents about the impact of our officers, how they're interacting with them children, how they are de-escalating conflict with student to student and then student to teacher, and so we are grateful for your service and your sacrifice and anything that we can do to make this a rich path for our district. It is important that every student comes to school and feels safe and that their families know that they are safe, and so thank you so much, and I'll yield to any board member that would like to share something.
I'd like to also echo President McConnell's words. As an employee of the Park District, we throw all the big festivals, and you guys are a huge contribute to making sure that our students are safe because they know you, and they see you every day at school, so seeing you guys out there and the way that you are able to de-escalate the situations with care is a lot different from what we're used to seeing in any other spaces. So thank you for all of you, that all of you guys do.
Thank you.
Yes.
So appreciate the presentation. I know last year, and I did get a report and an update on the why, but I do know there were some schools, maybe just one or two, that had to go without an SRO kind of towards the second half of the school year. Can you just talk about that, you know, starting off the beginning of the school year, we're going to be fully staffed with the SRO at every school, but is there some systems in place to kind of ensure that that will remain for the duration of the school year?
Absolutely. Those systems are in place. I'd love to share some of that offline. I don't like telegraphing where the quarterback is going to be or where he's going to throw, but those systems are put in place, and I am very happy this year. We're good.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Chief Boone, I just, I want to thank you and your team. I see firsthand the relationships that you build with our students. It's evident when you watch SROs interact with students. I've seen you guys show up in non-school hours at Parent University, Juneteenth, all the things, you're everywhere all the time, and we appreciate your team so much for that. And I just thank you for the work that you're doing because the rest of us can all do the work that we're doing because you guys are doing your job. So thank you so much for all of your hard work and for showing up in the summer.
Okay, is there anyone else? All right. Thank you. Pardon me? Okay, yeah, yeah, we'll circle back to that. Okay, we have our next district presentation with Dr. Annette Coleman and Mr. Boone. Thank you.
Thank you again. This is a presentation on that we piloted, a new walkthrough metal detector system called Evolve. We piloted this at Richwoods, especially since we had so many children that were in that area going through the metal detectors, and we wanted to get them the first hour on time, and we found out that this was a huge success when we piloted this the week at Richwoods. So what Evolve is, again, it's that walkthrough metal detector. It helps to detect, deter, orchestrate response to physical security threats, and it has a concealed weapons detection. One of the things I do love about it is it collects data, so we know how many students, you know, set off the metal detector, who actually sets it off, is it, you know, habitual, so we can have those discussions as far as, you know, things to bring in, things not to bring. Again, it detects that concealed weapons as you walk through, really how that worked when students walked through the system, they walked through fully with their backpacks, they didn't have to take them off at that time, and we were able to look on the iPad, it shows us where there's any metal or anything that could potentially be a weapon, and then we direct that student over to another line where officers were able to follow up with those checks. But it sped everything up, and here it says it can screen up to 4,000 people per hour for that dual lane system. And then again, it talks about that tablet that we use, it shows us directly where that metal is on their person. Also, they've come out with Expide, so if they had their backpack on them, instead of just walking through and getting flagged, they can put their book bag down on Expide, like you're walking through the airport, it scans, checks that bag. That way it takes the human element out of that for any error, and it'll keep things sped up. So while the student is walking through the metal detector, the bag's going through the Expide, it'll detect anything and it'll speed things up for a check later. And I don't know if Dr. Coleman had anything else. So that's what Evolve is, and Dr. Coleman is here if there's any questions on anything else.
I'm bored. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, I was going to ask, what's the cost breakdown? If you can, just kind of share how that looks and how we came to the cost and all that good stuff.
I included that in the action item that I don't have in front of me, but there is a yearly fee of approximately $100,000, approximately. You may have that information in the actual action item. I meant to print it, so I apologize for that. And the breakdown, we would have it for all three of our major high schools, Peoria High, Richwoods, and Manuel, and we would have the walkthrough system as well as the Expide system.
Yeah, it says 161,462 for the first school year, and then the sequential years are 108,
776, and this is through Title IV funds for safety. And it's a four-year agreement?
Correct.
For about a half mil, for about a half million dollars.
For four years.
For four years.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Sure.
Mr. Boone, if the board approves this purchase, do you still feel like clear bags, so like, I just would love for you to speak on how clear bags and Evolve and Expide could all work together to enhance safety, if you don't mind?
Yeah, all of it will be safety-related. If you use, if you still continue to use the clear bags in the high schools, we would still be putting them through that, that system. I'd rather double down on it. If you choose to only use clear bags in middle schools, stuff like that, I feel this is, I feel confident that with Expide, that bag is getting checked anyway, and we'll be able to flag it much easier and we'll have more speed to it. As it relates now, you know, when you have 50 million different backpacks and you have a short window with people having to reach in bags and check them, it's a lot harder to do that. With the assist of this, that'll speed that process up and make it more accurate, and if you use clear backpacks and if there's, you know, a standard backpack, it's a lot easier to go, look through it, speed things up so we can get kids to class first hour.
Do you feel like if a bag goes through this, this would maybe help people feel like their privacy? So one of the things I've heard a lot about with the clear bags is privacy-related, and I feel like when you're searching their bags, I mean, they're still, their privacy is intact because like you're not showing everyone what's in their bag, right? You're looking in their bag, but like with this, do you feel like people would maybe feel like their privacy is still intact because it's not being opened as much, or can you speak on that a little?
Yeah, if we're just putting that bag on there and it's just going through, it's got a screen showing everybody's stuff, and like you said, we're checking that bag anyway, so this would definitely help with privacy.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any options? Yes, Ms. Ross.
First of all, the first initial contact on this particular...
On this particular item, thank you. There was a cost of $306,000, and so, you know, in the write-up that we got for this meeting, it's different. I'm saying it's per year now. The 306 was for four years, and my question is, why do we rent these things or lease them when we could, what is the cost if we purchase it? That's one question. What's the cost if we purchase this and why are we, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen in three years as far as funding is concerned.
I can get you the price if we purchase brand-new machines. I can definitely...
I'm talking about these specific machines that we're talking about.
Right. We, it is a leasing, a subscription to the company, but I can, if we would like to purchase them, I would be more than happy to get the price for that.
Are they online, Dr. Coleman? Is Jerry online? Yes, they're online. I've done my research, they're online.
I can call Jerry and get the price.
I'm talking about, is he part of this meeting?
Yes, he's available.
Is he listening? Oh, that online. Yes, yes, ma'am. And so with the technology, Dr. Coleman as well, it changes so quickly. Obviously, the subscription and leasing, we looked at that as well. It's a little bit more...
Yeah, it's pricier because again, just like a GPS system, it changes every year, so it will be a little bit pricier, but I mean, I'm welcome, I will...
My major concern is that, you know, over the years, we keep, we keep, you know, buying things that really become obsolete. Now, we've had these, these metal detectors, how many years now? Long before you guys, well...
Oh, the Garrett's were before I got here.
It was before you came, right, but it was, still during the time that I was here, and metal detectors have worked, but I just wonder if you've done research because there are so many other options out there. This seemed to have come by really quick, and there's a lot of claims against, what they're saying, there's a lot of claims against that in the, you know, in the research that I've done, you know, which, which kind of doesn't go well with what you're saying that this particular object does. I've seen plenty of these, you know, these, these systems when we go to conferences and that, but did you do much research on it? It seems like it came by really quick.
We've been looking into this for about three months, is that about what you've been, and then I told you we had the pilot out at Richwoods so that we can see how it works and actually have the officers present, the other principals were present, so that we can see if this is something we really wanted to use in our district.
I talked to a couple of students and they said that they, they saw something new for one or two days. How long was it piloted?
That was a week.
A week?
Mm-hmm. That was a week.
I don't know, there's just, I just think that we need to do more research and find out what is the best product for this, because I'm not just looking at high schools, I really want, you know, you know the statistic says, major crimes are not in high school, they're in middle school now. So I'm not sure why we would just piecemeal this out. We've done this so many times. You have, go ahead.
Okay, next person, yes, Ms. Kostic.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I do have some concerns in regards to this particular program. You said that you piloted it at Richwoods for one week?
Yes, ma'am.
And was there any data that you had regarding that pilot?
They shared that data with you. We can get that data from them because they had data for how many, you know, hits were on the radio, the system, how many times we had to stop the system, all that, they collect that data.
Another major concern that I have is it's really geared, this particular piece of equipment is really geared towards weapons, concealed weapons, and those weapons, let me ask, because the way that it was explained to me, that it was mostly for the guns, okay. What about ghost guns? What about knives? What about vapes? Because we...
It will not pick up a vape at all, but if it's for that, it will not pick up a vape. If the metal, if it's heavy metal, it will detect that, it will not pick up a vape. It will pick up the other items. We did, we had someone walk through with a knife, and it did pick up a knife, a staff member, not a student. We had a staff member walk through with the knife. We had it turned up as high as possible so that we can see how well it could detect a knife, so we did do that as well.
Additionally, was this particular program the only one that we looked at in regards to security?
It's the only one that we piloted so far and we looked at.
One of the things that I would like to see is to open it up to other companies and see what they also have to offer. You know, I don't think it's fair, I'm only speaking personally, I don't think it's fair that we just pick the first one out there. I think that we need to do a little bit more research. I do, I did read that there was some discrepancies with the FTC regarding their equipment, I believe it was in the Baltimore area, if I'm not mistaken, but if we're going to spend this type of money as a board, financially, we do have a responsibility towards the money that is being spent. I would like to see us do a little bit more as far as reaching out to other companies and seeing whether or not they are willing to pilot with us for a little bit more than a week, because I don't believe that within a week it does what we needed to do to provide the information that we need. If we could get another program that also, we all know that drugs are a major issue, and we need something that is also going to pick up those types of things. So I mean, it's a great program, it does sound like it's a great program, it's a great, it's a great ideal that we need to do. I just think we need to do a little bit more before we make, well, before I would make a decision on whether or not. Lastly, if this were, if this particular program were approved, what is the implementation date?
Those are things we would have to work through. We don't have a specific implementation date yet.
We talked about July 30, the first day of school for kids, and I will say, the team, you guys have done a really nice job vetting this company. This is a company that's pretty much used throughout school districts. I know Central Illinois, there's some school districts that are using them, a lot in the state of Illinois, they are by far the only company that I'm aware of, and they, the implementation was, was for the first day of school, number one, and number two, the primary purpose of this, when we talk about safety, it's, and we heard a lot about vapes and other, other items, it's really to prevent really guns from getting into our buildings and into our classrooms. We had a situation last year, and that was very frustrating. In our current safety system, there's a lot of room for error because it's primarily hand, manually done in terms of searches. Every bag has to be searched, and thus the reason, and we talked about it, and the high school principals were the ones who basically said, hey, don't forget this team, let's bring it back, we want, we want it to be piloted, we want to see what it can do for us, and Mr. Robertson, Dr. Hawks, and Mr. McGinnis were all, all basically nudging us, saying, we got to look at this seriously for next year, so just wanted to put that on the table. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to say, hold on just a second, Larry or Chanelle? Larry or Chanel, do you have any, you have any questions?
No, just.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say, I did recommend that we, we look at the system in Champaign and others. But I don't think we should just look at one system and say, it's okay, it's, it's a go. Because the, you know, I, I've been doing, looking at this for a long time.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Ross.
Dr. Coleman and Chief Boone, when you decided to pilot the system, was it the only system? I guess I'd like to hear that, like, did you narrow down which system you decided you wanted to pilot from the choices out there? Or did you just go, you know, this is the first one we're gonna pilot and see how this goes?
This, this was the first one we looked at.
Okay. Thank you for that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much for your time and for your diligence and, thank you. All right, I wanna pause to recognize Marvin, who's here. Stand up, Marvin. Welcome and thank you for coming out and spending time with us on your summer break. Would you like to share something with us? Okay.
Little Boopie has lost her sheep and doesn't quite know how to help them. With vice to engage, they'll come to the stage bringing their problems beside them. Whether it be kinkay grime over the damage she lost in the ocean or catching Dr. Philow's sock, have a name. We all enjoy some reality TV and just like the romance on The Bachelor, our relationship with reality TV is complicated. Our parents might say our generation is season eight of Love is Blind, boring, political, and messy. But let's not forget all the talk shows you all enjoyed, like Maury. You are Jerry, Jerry Springer. Or Ellen DeGeneres before she was led to her after being canceled for being a terrible boss, just like The Bo Show by Betty Gira. You know, every once in a while on The Bo Show, we like to feature someone who has found her spirit in the face of tragedy. A mother of seventeen, Ruth Ann Dumpty lived with her husband Humpty in a giant shoe. Last November, Ruth Ann lost her husband in a tragic accident. Welcome to the show, Ruth Ann. So Ruth Ann, take us back to that day. When I was back at home vacuuming the hill, when I got off the pool, I assumed it was cooling and the man on the line said that she was one of the kings for me. She looked at all he'd leave description at the time, but... Then he said that my husband is, he is...
Yes?
A fool.
A fool?
A creep fool.
Huh?
A fool from a vault. I still don't see how he's a giant egg.
Oh.
Now I see. I did a little soul searching and I finally took myself to bed. I said, Ruth Ann, even if the man you love more than anything in the world may be shattered into thousands of tiny pieces without any hope of being put back together again, you can still put back together the shattered pieces in your life. So what did you do? I started to defeat the woman I am, admittedly shit and home mom who lives in a giant sneaker with seventeen eight children. It's a beating when you hurt dead husband. You go, girl. But how did the children deal with the trauma? Boom, I sent the whole mess from the sergeant Willie Dinkie's all night boot camp for a sassy teenager. Let's take a look. Dead son! My name is Sergeant William Dinkie and you disgust me!
Say yes, sir!
You've got to learn some respect, you kids have it so easy! There's like seventeen of us, sir, and we live in a shoe, sir. Why are you doing this, says our dad from up above? Because that's a scrabble of worlds out there and you've got to be hard boiled to survive! You little embryos, fight me later!
Say yes, sir!
Thank you, boys, for saving my New Yorks. They may be cracked, but thanks to you, they won't be broken. Except for Marjina, who knows about that one? You go, girl, I'm proud of you. And remember, folks, whether you're walking in heels or living in one, never let a scrabble pass keep you from being sunny side up. That's it for this week's Bo Show. Tune in next time when we speak to a misunderstood wolf who says he was framed by three pigs, a grandma, and a girl with a cape that screams "Main Character" to you. See you next time!
Absolutely amazing, Marvin. And thank you for representing all the great things from Peoria Public Schools. That was outstanding and may you have a super bright future. Doing, it looks like you absolutely love doing this, so may it lead to prosperity. Thank you so much. All right, thank you. We now have moved to the portion of our agenda presentation by audience. You will have five minutes to share your thoughts. And our timekeeper is our Board Secretary, Mrs. Ross. And when you hear the sound, may you yield to the time limit. Thank you kindly. Our first speaker today is Ms. Emily Huff.
Good afternoon, Ward and Dr. Karat. My name is Emily Huff. I am a parent of a current Richwoods student and a recent Richwoods graduate. I'm a longtime advocate for Peoria Public Schools, teaching and volunteering at Glen Oak, when it was the old Glen Oak, Ting, when that school was still open, Franklin Edison, when it was still an Edison School, the old Harrison School, and Whittier School over the last 25 years. This is the very, very first time that I have felt compelled to come to a board meeting and stand up and talk over this decision of the clear board policy. I cannot, I cannot advocate for this. I emailed every single one of you yesterday, sitting on the board. I received one response and I'm very grateful for that person that responded. I felt like I was being heard. I felt that my input was being valued by a member of the community, by a member of the board. I appreciated that. Even though I don't feel that we are on the same page as to our viewpoints, I was still considered and I was still thought about and that my opinion mattered. That was important to me as a citizen, as a parent, as a, a used-to-be a former employee of District 150. As a parent, I absolutely want to have my students feel safe. I want to feel safe when I'm going into the building, that is important to me. I commend our SROs for the endless amount of work that they do. My girls have always played sports, they're always present, I have volunteered, they have been there, they are always in the building. And I appreciate that so much. I have never been bothered by the need for the metal detectors and the bag checks for security, even when my daughters do have a tardy notice for first hour. One is really good, never got a tardy. The other, she was a freshman, she got her share of tardies. But I do feel that clear bags are not going to give the security that you are looking for. I am not here to reiterate and tell you everything that was in my email. I am actually going to add, because I didn't feel the necessity of sending you an additional email to add further points yesterday, as I was just steamed about what was going to take place. One of the points in my email was about personal hygiene products, and I know that every mother feels this. Unfortunately, my daughters are not blessed with light cycles. This pouch is the one that my daughter carries. She has to have spare undergarments because effective life, periods have stigma, we are heavy, we have heavy flows. This in fact has several pads and tampons in here, plus an undergarment. And I'm so grateful that there was that wonderful visual out there with the boxes of vapes and weapons. Because a quick search for me found 12 handguns and several knives that were small enough to fit in the palm of my hand, right there. It can still fit in here. So can my daughter's underwear and tampons and pads that are gonna go right in her backpack. So what are we gonna do, search all of these? Are we gonna search all of these pouches that must be in her backpack? No, that is not okay. I am not okay with that. I can't honestly imagine that anybody with daughters, even sons, are gonna be okay with that. My daughter was at a campus life meeting yesterday and the boys were like, ooh, are you gonna be okay with that? I'm not okay with that. I feel like that is an embarrassment. And she was like, yeah, that's not gonna be cool. Where there is a will, teenagers are going to find a way. Are we gonna have clear tin bags? My daughters run track, track spikes are gonna go right through those clear bags, guaranteed. What about instruments? For all those band kids, are we gonna be searching those too? Because you can hide weapons in those hidden compartments. I don't understand, if we just have clear backpacks, why don't we have clear everything? It's kind of an inconsistency in a hypothetical situation. Clear bags are simply providing a false sense of security for those who don't work inside of a school building. The bags still need to be searched, even if you can see through them. The only thing that is changing is gonna be the financial responsibility for the parents. This is being put on the parents, all of us. Admittedly, not many of you are going to have to replace the backpacks year, 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 month, month, month. We've gone through one backpack for all four years of high school. One. I guarantee we're gonna be probably doing one a month. I'm not, oh, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And yes, we did receive your email and we don't always reply to everything. And so thank you, we appreciate you, Jonathan.
You're welcome. I appreciate the response that I did get.
Thank you. Our next person is Ms. Mary Beth Cunningham.
Hello, I told you I wasn't gonna be here, but I lied. Part of what I do best, you know, me and my dishonesty. Actually, I, 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 I'm here not necessarily about the clear backpacks. However, I will talk about my thoughts about what efforts are being put into things. I'm here as someone who tries continuously to get people involved in our district, openly, actively engaging in their right to free speech, right? And through that process, I, I've met a lot of people who share a common goal, maybe different ways to get there, many of you, people that I wouldn't have met otherwise and I'm thankful that I have. When we're kids, teens, and even in college or early in our career, our friendships and relationships happen out of proximity, but the social sciences, we know that our friendships then become later on, if we're actually actively working on healthy relationships with people, it's out of similarities, passion, drive, focus, even if they're in different venues. So if you, if you know me, you know that I've always wished to be able to sit on that horseshoe, right? I've never had, I'll come into tears thinking of that. I'll, I'll never have the opportunity in the near future. I have to really consider my kids and their health. It takes a lot of true commitment if you're going to do that job right, or that position right. It's not a job you don't get paid, right? And it takes a lot of time that people don't know, we talk about it, but it is a time that you've all committed to. And it's time that I don't have because of circumstances related to my kids' health and that's fine. So when I, when I see people step up to run for board or even to be appointed to board, I'm always hopeful that they have the same zest for this that I would have. And so with Mrs. Hargrave Murray departing, I wanna say thank you because I didn't know you before this and for all I knew, you could have just been there and sat there and not answered emails, because I've had that. You didn't, you were very responsive, you were very understanding. Takes a lot of understanding sometimes to answer my emails. And I wanna tell you thank you. It was a year, but it was a year you poured things into while also having other commitments, so thank you for that. And I, I also, I have to say that in these meetings, I'm thankful that I've met you and many other people. I, what, 15 years ago, I met Brenda Wilson, was it 15-ish, no, ish years ago, I met Brenda Wilson through these board meetings, back in the day campaigned for her and it didn't, it didn't pan out at the time for 150, but I'm glad to know that the shift that's happening is also gonna work out, right? Like we, we had a year where we didn't know who was gonna be here and it worked out well. And we have five years where I believe it's gonna work very well because she was the person at the podium that I said, oh my God, I wanna meet her, I wanna go to lunch with her. And she's been stuck with me ever since, unfortunately for her maybe, but it's really great what you guys do, even when we disagree. I also have to agree with Mrs. Huff, I, there's times where it's frustrating as, as someone on this side who works really hard to make sure things go well, when we don't hear back. And you can't answer every email. However, the time commitment that we give when we put in, put ourselves out there is to be able to communicate with people. So I hope that that improves for some, for others, it's great. As far as the clear backpacks, I was actually more relieved coming to this meeting when I saw Chief Boone's presentation about Evolve. I don't know what's gonna happen, but as someone who lived through Columbine, while my dad was my principal, in the middle of my high school, going from carrying bags to not and shutting doors to what's now an addition on university at Richwoods and having to hustle to class, I find value in, in things. And there's things that I don't, I don't know about, right? And I have to trust that, I know we have probably the best SROs in the nation, I have to trust that our union hasn't necessarily come out and not supported this. And so there's a reason things happen, even if it's not what I would prefer. Man, going through life at the end of high school, when, when school violence in that capacity, we're just starting, I'm glad to see people thinking about this. And that Evolve is a really good way to do it. I don't know what's gonna happen. I would hope that it starts at the beginning of the year, whatever we decide to do. But I'm in full support of whatever our SROs are telling us that, that they need to spend money on. School safety being the primary part of it. If kids bring vapes, that's a conversation their parents need to have with them, the abeyance coordinator can have with them. I was that person once. If my kids bring a vape and I find that in their bags, because I should be checking to make sure my kids are healthy, that's my conversation to have. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. Now we have Mr. Dan Walter.
Good afternoon. For those of you that don't know, I was a member of that roundtable a couple of years ago. Spent five years, five happy years as a school board member. One of the things, I appreciate the previous speakers, I am so glad I did not have to follow Marvin. That kid was so good. I said, no, I don't wanna be the next person I'm speaking after he did that. I think in about 10 years, you'll probably see him on television or in a movie. That kid's enormous talent. I'm here really for a couple of reasons. One is, having been a former board member, I just wanted to thank you for supporting our police, campus police. When I got on board, that was one of the first things I did, was check what they were doing in their history and have been a supreme advocate for them. And I'm so glad you got them. Thanks, Dr. Karat and Ward, for getting them to full capacity. There's nothing wrong with having safe schools and we've got a lot of good leadership in doing that, so I was grateful for that. There's one other thing too, about, we got a new board member. And it's interesting, those of you that are history majors understand that Abraham Lincoln lost more elections than he won. I think I was the Abraham Lincoln of school board members. But anyway, in the first election that I lost, there were nine people competing for one spot and there was one guy who was pro, the other superintendent, which I wasn't and neither was Ms. Wilson. We, we got to go to a lot of forums and stuff and I guess, you know, she is really a bright woman. We got to be friends after that and then later she decided, when she decided to run, I told her, I'm all in. I'm all in, I'll help you wherever way I can. So I did that. And part of that was collecting petitions. You have to go out, you have to knock on doors and you do that. And one of the nicest things I can say, we collected enough petitions for her to cleanly get on the ballot and I can honestly say, we did not have one dead person sign our petitions. Everybody that we collected were, were alive and living in the place they were supposed to be. I don't think everybody sitting on that board can say that. So I'm very happy, very happy for Brenda to be here. I think she's gonna be a big plus for this board. You are gonna face some challenges because Washington has decided to give up, I think a lot of this country, but a lot of public education. You're gonna face some very tough votes that I didn't have to face, a lot of other people didn't have to face. Funding's gonna be an issue because the state of Illinois cannot make up for what we get from the federal government. I'll turn it over to the CEO to say that. I'll turn it over to the CEO to say that, but we're going to have a lot of money that you're going to have to come up with. And so you're going to have some difficult decisions. I wish you well. I wish you to think, you know, think about the things that are going to go on. School safety was one of the first things you did, and I applaud you for that. And I just want to say also, congratulations to Mrs. Wilson, and I think she'll be a great addition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Does anybody have any responses to the audience? All right, our next item is a approval of our June 9 minutes 2025. Motion to approve. Madam Secretary for the role. Mrs. Kostic. Mrs. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Ivory.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
President McConnell.
Aye.
We have seven ayes. The motion carries.
Thank you. What is omitted from the agenda is the superintendent's update, and we will have that now. Thank you, Dr. Carr.
Thank you, President McConnell. Not a lot, just, you know, it's very busy. A lot of people think, you know, the kids are gone, staff, they're gone. And we could take vacations and just hang out. But this is actually the busiest time of year, just planning for, for the start of school. Our teachers are scheduled to get back on the 28th. We, we have a big convocation welcome back. Convocation, it will be held at the Civic Center on the 28th from 7:00 to 10:00. It's been a while since we've convened. We've usually done it virtually and given empowered principals to have more sessions in, in buildings. So I think everybody is looking forward to that. We have a really populous speaker, Ron Clark. So the board, board members, you're invited to come for sure. You'll get more information. So I'm really looking forward to that. It will be all about instruction. We have a huge goal next year of focused on increasing our IER scores or percentages by 10%. Our theme will be Mission Possible: Cracking the Proficiency Code. We do a lot as a district, of teachers and principals and staff, a lot with growing our children. And we want that growth to be translated into their proficiency level as well and which is getting them more at grade level. So that's going to be a big focus on. And I just loved all the activities that each individual school conducted with their leadership teams in terms of high impact strategies that they're going to use. If you come in our area, every building has. So it's, it's really fun. It's exciting. I'm very excited about next year. I think this is, this is the first time in a long time that we're all pretty much aligned with the same goal. And they come up with how they're going to accomplish that goal. I think everybody, there's room for improvement with the exception of our gifted school because they're all at, in the 90s anyway in proficiency level. So they get a lot more flexibility, but it's, that's why I'm excited about that. Staffing, of course, is a big thing. Our staffing looks really, really good. I remember in 2015, when I started, we had 108 teacher openings. And now we're down to about 15. We have enough teachers that we are sharing with other districts in the state of Illinois. And it's like 10 districts that are getting excess teachers from us. And so that's really nice to help. And immunization, just kind of getting the word out to our families in terms of what's coming up in immunization. You're driving around, you might see the signs. Although it's October 15th for first day compliance, I would encourage our parents to get in early so that they can get it done. And yeah, and I talked about convocation as well. So those are some of the things that we are, we're working on right now and goals for next year too. So it's, it's a fun time.
Okay. Do we have any questions from anyone? And then if you could give us the update, just the general information update on FOIA items.
Because this is the first of the year, nothing, nothing yet. So things will start maybe at the next board meeting. When they come in, I'll present them. But I don't have any, thank you, no FOIA reports to update today.
Okay, thank you. Any payment of bills, questions from anyone, payment for travel? All right, we'll have the consent agenda. Dr. Wilson?
Yes, thank you, President McConnell. The consent agenda consists of the following items. Item number one, payment of bills. Item number two, payment for travel. Item number three, human resources report. Item number four, interim payments. Item number five, resolution approving the Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund. Item number six, resolution authorizing inter-fund transfers and loans and authority to invest funds. Item number seven, tax deductions. Item number eight, resolution designating depositories. Item number nine, resolution approving treasurer's bond. Item number 10, prevailing wage. Item number 11, an achievable dream urban learning leadership center. Item number 12, approval of iReady professional development for Dr. C.T. Vivian Primary School. Item number 13, Bet Tech Incorporated, Evolve Express and Evolve Expedite. Item number 14, clinical education affiliation agreement with the University of Illinois. And finally, item number 15, policy number 7:166, clear school bags. And that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
And board, do we have any items we would like to pull for a separate vote? Yes, Ms. Kostic?
Yes, I would like to pull item 13 for...
A separate vote?
For a separate vote. I would like to table it for our next meeting.
Okay, we'll just, we can address that when we, when we deal with it as a separate vote. Okay, do we have any other items for clarification from anyone? Is there any?
I want to ask a question, but I don't necessarily...
No, you can ask the question. What is the item number?
Item number 15.
Item number 15, yes.
Is that appropriate time?
Yeah, why don't we just, why don't we just pull it for a separate vote so that we can have a, a clean conversation?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, do we have any other items that we want to pull for a separate vote and further discussion? All right, seeing there are none, all of the resolutions for the district liquid asset, those are our standard things that happen annually. Mr. Willis?
Right.
All right, thank you. Motion to approve items with the exception of 13 and 15.
So move.
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary for the role. Mrs. Kostic. Mrs. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Ivory.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
President McConnell.
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries. Okay, we'll, we'll stick with the order. Item number 13. Mrs. Kostic?
On item number 13, I'd like to table it for another meeting to allow the board to have responses in regards to the questions that were raised during the presentation.
Okay. Board, do we have any, so you're rendering a, a motion to table?
To table, yes.
Do you have a second? All right, Madam Secretary for the role. Mrs. Kostic.
Aye.
Mrs. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Ivory.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
President McConnell.
Aye.
We have seven ayes. Motion carries.
Before we move on to item 15, will there be enough time between now and July 14th to have pilot, like, can I just get clarity? Are we, are we postponing it until July 14th's board meeting? Or are we postponing it until they've had time to do the research?
We are postponing it until the research is done. And so there, there is no set time at this moment.
Thank you for the clarification.
Will be determined when we, when we have the necessary information.
Thank you.
There will be no implementation on July 28th.
Yeah, thank you for that clarity. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number 15, you have a question?
Well, I just, I heard from some community members and taxpayers and different people who emailed. And I, I think that the district and the administration has addressed a lot of the concerns that I received. But I would just love it if Dr. Carr could reaffirm that. So one of the things I heard about is that all of our community partners who give out backpacks will not have clear bags. And so I was wondering if you could communicate the validity of that statement. I've also heard a lot of concerns about the durability. But I'm under the impression that the district did some research and purchased a like high quality, high performing bag that has a high price point, and we are offering it at a more affordable price point. So I would just love for you to share some of what our administration has done that the community might not be aware of. Pretty please.
Yeah, hold on. Well, hold on, let her answer, and then you can, you can have a follow up with that. Okay.
Thank you, President McConnell. So yes, in reference to the clear bookbag pending policy, that's on the agenda for deliberate, and it's being deliberated right now. There have been actually a lot of partners involved, and I gave the board an update this morning. I know that in terms of partners who will be providing, because that's one of the questions, right? Will be providing backpacks to our families through their events. I know Representative Gordon Booth has something July 15th. I know Mr. Banks, I just saw him walk in. You have something coming up where you provide bookbags. And you've, you have about 100 bookbags of, so that you will be providing. One of our board member, board member Chanel Murray McGraves mentioned that the Phil, the fire truck, they're going to be also having backpacks. Dream Center will be providing us with about 400 backpacks as well. And these are all clear ones for the, for the middle school and high school. Because what's on the table right now, it's really for middle and high school, right? That's, that's who would be impacted with, if this policy goes through. And then, of course, our foundation, President Wilson and myself, about a couple of months ago, talked with them. And they've, they've invested quite a bit as well in, in, not only in the regular traditional backpacks, but also the, the clear backpacks as well. I think there was about $13,000 worth of backpacks. And yes, board member Rose, we ordered about 2,000 in addition to everything that else that I talked about, 2,000. And they're very, very, very sturdy. And they're, they're, they're huge as well. And the original price point, thank you, the original price point was, there's a sample in my office, actually. If somebody wants to get it in my office. Yes, thank you. It there, it was originally $50. And because we got them in bulk, they, they will be $20. And actually, in terms of distribution, bags will be distributed to schools, the middle schools and high schools. So parents can literally purchase those. And of course, they can also purchase them, you know, at any retail store, Amazon. I know we got some, some additional, I got some funding, we bought 500 more and got them from Amazon, and they came in two days. And so, yes, I think they are readily available. And, and we will, there will, there will be bags for sturdy ones. So thanks for asking for it. Sturdy ones for sale at the schools. And then if anybody's really, really struggling, just send an email to myself or the principal, and we'll see whatever we can to help. But again, those partners I help in, Dream Center is doing some things. Andy King, Dr. Andy King from Dream Center, very supportive. And so maybe we can send it out to the, the audience. So is that anything? Did I miss anything?
No, you didn't miss anything. But I think the other thing that's worth noting before we approve it is that the compliance date is not July 30th. The compliance date has not been set yet, Dr. Wilson, but will be communicated later, or it's in...
Well, you know, so I'll fall back to administration. But I did, that's what I was going to say, is I highly recommend not starting at the top of the year, but maybe giving families some time. And I think, you know, President McConnell mentioned October, something of that nature, or with vaccines, in line with vaccinations.
Yeah, I was just saying for the, to keep from us having the hardship on our families. We have a compliance date for vaccinations as of October 15th. And so I think to keep it clean so that everybody has a date in mind, we would like to grant that and maybe add that to the implementation policy and partner with our parents. And may I add to, my kids went to Peoria High. They're all graduates. They're in their 20s now. And we did have a clear backpack policy somewhere between 2012 and 2015. And they didn't look like that. They were different. And I want us to be mindful that we utilize clear backpacks in every public venue. Civic Center, NFL, even at the Peoria Chiefs game. And so I don't think it is exposing people's privacy as much as it is for a safety factor. I do understand women, I'm a woman, and, and I work in government. And I work in the Capitol, and everything that I bring into the Capitol is inspected. And that's, this is the world we are living in. And I hope that we can embrace this and problem solve together because it does matter, you know, to us. Personal items are to be respected. And one observation is when there are personal items, sometimes a squeeze and a touch. I've taken personal items into the Kansas City Chiefs football stadium. And I let them know, these are personal items. They don't open it, but they do press down, feel it to make sure there's nothing hard in it. And so I've seen this process happen. I've, I have participated in this process with my children in high school. And I think we will find that it's not as bad as we perceive it. I just think it's something that we need to be willing to try. And, and the district's here to, you know, support. And I hope that we will just be partners together as we problem solve. We just live in a different world. I graduated from school a long time ago, and I'm not giving you guys when I graduated because that will date me. But life is different. And shooting and contraband and things, I remember back in the 80s or 90s that people had cigarettes. That was a big deal. And you could put cigarettes in your pocket, you know, just, we all have, every generation has some issue that we all have to overcome. It does start with parenting first. Absolutely parenting first and accountability second. But because all of us parent differently, and we do. Some people tolerate certain things where other parents don't. And that's the world that we live. And so I hope that we can problem solve this together, not to bring any hardship on any particular family. But let's just respect rules because rules keeps us out of chaos. And I just think that's important in solid. Any other board member? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that if you do your research, many, many schools are going to this, this clear backpack initiative simply because of, you know, the safety, safety issue. So it's really not something that we're the only one doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any feedback? Yes, ma'am.
So just quickly, the, the 2,000 will arrive July 15th. And actually, it will be personalized. It will say P R Public Schools on it as well.
Okay. Okay. So does anyone else have any feedback? And do we want to modify our policy agreement to say it will be implemented or mandated by October?
It's not in the policy.
Oh, it's not in the policy? No, I just want the understanding out in the public so that everybody leaves this room with the same information at the same time. We don't want it to be any mystery that when is, when, when does it have to be there? So are we agreeing then we're going to say October 1st or 15th? Okay, thank you. And then let's just be transparent with that. Because we did have, some information went out prematurely and it created a little confusion. And I want us as a district and as a board to be transparent as we implement things. Because it's not just us, it is all of us. We only serve in this capacity as an elected official volunteer. And we are accountable for the decisions that we make carefully and conscientiously. And we do receive everybody's email, and we respect the feedback. In fact, I love to get the feedback because it is a guiding tool. So thank you so much, and keep the feedback coming. We can always talk about it. Because the goal is... the goal is to problem-solve together. Madam Secretary, anybody else have anything else?
Yeah, I do. A question in regards to the $20 fee that we would charge for these backpacks. There are a lot, lot of families that would not be able to afford it. What would be the... Excuse me? No, thank you. What would be the cost if the, if Peoria Public Schools picked up the cost of the backpacks versus passing it on to parents who are already struggling? It's kind of what I'm asking, is that, is there, is there a way that, because as, as a district, we are the ones that are stating, this is what we are going to. If we can give away laptops, we should be able to give away these bookbags.
So the laptops, we do not give away laptops, the laptops are provided through a title grant, and so they, then they have to be turned back in. I guess if the board wants to give the bookbags away at no cost, that's the board's decision. We have never done that. You know, for the, for the 2,000 bags, I believe that was close to $40,000, thirty-eight, something like that. So just trying to recover, and the original cost is 50, but because of the bulk purchase, but if the board, that's why you have all these partners that are providing supports. But if, if it's the board's desire, you tell me what you want to do, and we'll make it happen, but I, I would not recommend it.
It was just a question.
Okay.
Just because of the fact that there are, there are parents that have multiple children in, in the, within the district, and that could bring a hardship on those parents that have three and four children.
Yep.
That's, that's the reason that I was just kind of asking. And we know that the demographics of the many families that we are serving in this district.
Yeah, so we, the, the 500 that was purchased and received yesterday, it's also outside, and Heidi placed a lot of books in it, you can feel free to bring it, those were $11, and those, those we got from Amazon, and they're very similar size and durability, so they can get them cheaper as well. So these, these will just be personalized with PPS, they're slightly larger, but Dr. Coleman, there's a stack right, that little table I work outside, and those were, I think we got them for $11 per bag, and we got 500 of those, so that's affordable too.
Dr. Karan, I think it's, it's more about coordinating with the other entities and partners as well, because I know many of the bookbags go to the schools after they do the distribution. I mean, we gave away like 100 last year ourselves with the South Side, but they go to the schools, and the schools can be, you know, directed to make sure that those that are in need are the ones that get those that go to the school. Because we have plenty of bags that are left over usually, working with the Dream Center, and they usually send them to the schools, and the schools should know who needs what, so.
Correct, except the difference is those that are left over are given to us, donated to us either by the foundation, Peoria Public Schools Foundation, or the Dream Center, or the Phil the Fire Truck, so it's Oyani Collective, or Representative Johann Gordon Booth, so it's external partners that are picking up that cost. And that's why, you know, Dr. Gregory Wilson worked with them as well to ensure that they were purchasing those and providing those as an option. So Johann will have that.
Yeah, I understand that.
Mr. Banks will have some, Dream Center is giving us, yeah. Now, what we can do, sorry, is those that are donated, like for example, I haven't seen Dream Centers yet, like those could be set aside for families who, who really need some help.
See, I...
Which we haven't seen, and we did not purchase it, but those were, those were donated. And if the, our partners have extras, they can give them to the schools, and that's what they've done before, and they've done this before.
Gotta have, but I'm, I'm concerned also, because people go to different places and get bookbags, which, you know, may deny another child from getting one, but if we had some kind of coordination with everyone that's giving bookbags, that, you know, some kind of coordination would be ideal, that they could go to, you know, one spot and get theirs, and then go to another spot and get some, but somehow if we could coordinate with the partners, since we're calling them partners, that, you know, they'd be able to get, get one.
And I just want to offer a point of clarity, I think Mrs. Kostic alluded to, we were giving away laptops. We did do incentive superintendent incentives, where students were given a bicycle and a notebook as a celebratory item, and so I think that is the scope she was speaking of. And yeah, we do have loaner laptops and notebooks for students who can't own them, but we were speaking of the in, in incentive side.
It was with grant funded.
Okay, even grant funded, but for clarity, did it cost us more to put PPS schools on it, because did it, so, so then that was done free? Because I just think at this point, it's a clear backpack, and at the minimum cost, any decorations on it, let, just let the individuals do that, but to that point, we need, I would like to entertain a motion to a approved, and so that we can bring closure to this item.
A move.
Second.
Right, Madam Secretary, for the role.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Ivory?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Wilson?
Aye.
President McConnell?
Aye.
All right, thank you. I'd like to do our a announcement, it wasn't listed at the top, and so that's gonna be one of our closing items. And then I want, on behalf of the board, to extend our sincere condolences to our fellow board member, Mrs. Lynn Kostic, I don't want you to get, I don't want to upset you, but in the absence, in the loss of her husband, many of us were there about a week ago, and it's been a journey, and we pray God's strength for your life as you live differently, may you find peace and strength in the days, and know that we are here for you, and that we care, and it's just living life differently, and I understand that. And grief happens in waves, and it's an unpredictable emotion, and so we just, we are here for you. A announcements, we'll go around the horseshoe with board announcements.
Read 30 minutes a day, the school year starts, the days are new, with books to read and things to do, among the mouths and games to play, read 30 minutes every day. Every story sparks poet rhymes, can shape your heart, grow your mind, so take a break, that page is turned, feel how much there is to learn.
Backpack Peoria. Backpack Peoria will be held at the Dream Center Peoria on July 26, 2025, from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m. Students' families will be able to receive a free backpack filled with school supplies. I also add, Streets Belong to Me, July 24, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. In collaboration with Phil the Fire Truck Backpack Drive, students will be able to receive a free backpack and resources filled with school supplies at Treewind Park hosted by the Peoria Park District. And we will have clear...
Awesome. Applications for the Peoria Public Schools Foundation and CFCI Classroom Grants are open from July 1st to September 1st, 2025. Peoria Public Schools teachers and staff can apply for three grant options, up to $1,000 for classroom projects, $1,500 for STEM grades 5 through 12, and $500 for field trips. These grants help bring creativity, hands-on learning, and real-world experiences to students. Apply at www.pcsfoundation.org. Also, save the date, the Pop Back to School Celebration will be held Saturday, July 19, 2025, from 11 o'clock a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There'll be haircuts, uniforms, supplies, clear bookbags and regular bookbags, and a scholarship program, a scholarship that will be given away. That'd be at the Mecca Center of Peoria, 817 Armstrong Avenue, Peoria, Illinois, and that is Saturday, July 19.
Enrollment and registration. Enrollment and registration are now open for new students online. Please visit www.psd150.org backslash enrollment for more information. Students who attended Peoria Public Schools last year are automatically enrolled for the next school year unless changes have been made. Thank you.
Wraparound Center. Are you a family in need of support this summer? The Wraparound Center is here to help, located on the Latrobe site of Treewind K8 School. Our center serves as a one-stop shop for families in Peoria County, Peoria Community, offering a variety of essential services. So what do we offer? Therapeutic support, food pantry access, case management, housing guidance. The Wraparound Center is in, is open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Whether you are in Peoria Public Schools, if you're a Peoria Public Schools family or a member of the broader community, we welcome you to stop by or call at 309-282-1919 for more information.
Immunizations and physical exams. Immunizations and physicals are due by the first day of school, October the 15th, for all incoming kindergarten, sixth, ninth, and 12th grade students. Please get a head start on making a medical appointment for your student before school starts. Thank you.
Okay, first day of school reminder, the first day of school for the Knoxville Center for Student Success will be on Monday, July 14. And the first day of school for Valiska Hinton Early Childhood Education will be on Wednesday, July 16. All other Peoria Public Schools will open on Wednesday, July 30. We're in the month of back to school. Independence Day. In observance of Independence Day, all district offices will be closed on Friday, July 4. And one announcement, observation, I just want to personally thank Mrs., Mrs. Brooks, who was with us, serving as our middle school director, I thought she was gonna be here today, want to thank her for her service, her leadership, her compassion that she gave to our district, she was a great partner. I've received so many positive emails and some feedback about her service, and if she happens to watch this, I just want to say we thank you, and we wish you well in your next venture, and stay in touch with us, because we really value your, your work and your feedback. Thank you.
Could I just, could I dovetail?
Yes, yes, you may.
I just want to say that I run a program for the South Side called South Side Community United for Change, or SCUC, and Ms. Brooks was one of our speakers on two occasions. I have about 70 different individuals, little girls and boys, and they, they all knew her, because she's so personable, and we are really going to miss her. She served most of the schools in my district, and I'm really sad to see her go.
Yes, I say something, it's not in regards to announcements or anything, but thank you again for recognizing me as, but I also would like to recognize my husband, who was a crossing guard for probably about 14 years in this district, and he served faithfully until his illness, but I do want to give him recognition for doing a great job in being there for the children of this district. Thank you, Ms.
Definitely. Thank you. And then as we're rounding out this segment of our board meeting, we have any, a announcement for committees or anything, any updates for, for pending meetings for the month of July? Seeing there are none, a, a adjournment, and we will move into our organ, our, our reorganizational meeting. I would like to call our, our reorganization session to order an election of chairman pro, pro Tim as we go through this process. Motion to a approve?
A move. Second.
All right.
Does someone have to make a motion for...
Chairman Pro Tim.
To be pro, chairman pro Tim, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to make a motion for Harris McConnell to be the chairman pro Tim.
So that's, yeah, that...
Can she do that?
I thought I had to say it.
No, can she do that? A lawyer's here, but she's going to be elected, when she's on the election.
Well, but right now.
Right now? Okay.
Right, so as a...
Take the motion.
Right, so then, motion...
Second.
You just clarified Larry's, Larry's motion, you just added the name to...
Yes, to be chairman pro Tim.
Yes, sir. Okay, Madam Secretary, for the role. Mrs. Kostic?
You?
Hi.
Oh, God.
Election, yeah, election. Mrs. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Ivory?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Wilson?
Aye.
President McConnell?
Aye.
Have satisfied, motion carries. All right, recognition of our newly elected board member, Mrs. Brenda Wilson, would you come forward, please? Yeah, she, she can sit there. And do we have her, do we have her oath for her to read?
Got it.
Oh, you have it?
Yep.
Okay, good, welcome.
The newly updated, it was, looks like it was just updated on June 25.
Okay.
First oath.
Thank you, and you can, if you may, say your name, and then...
Do my oath?
And then read your oath, and then once you're done with your oath, if you'd like to have a couple of words, you want to share some comments, and we want to recognize your family who is here with you, you may do so as well.
Thank you.
Does she have, does...
Yeah, I was gonna say Chanel.
Chanel have anything to say? Um, no, Chanel, if you want, I was gonna have her speak at the end of this.
After.
Okay, well, no, I wanted you to stay at the horseshoe, though. Yeah, we're just transitioning to changing of the guard. Okay, Mrs.
My name's actually in it, so I'll just go. I, Brenda Wilson, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of Board of Education of the City of Peoria School District Number 150, in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I shall, I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board, while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. And I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Peoria Public Schools District Number 150. I shall assist in establishing a structure and environmental design to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for Peoria Public Schools District Number 150, and I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skill, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Thank you. Would you like to share some remarks, and can you introduce your family?
Yeah, do you guys want to stand up back there?
Family, stand up.
And actually, Pam Wilson, she worked at Central, she was a teacher at Central, she's, those are my bonus moms, my mother-in-laws.
Nice.
My parents are passed on, but this is my married family, my married parents.
Nice.
My husband, oh, did he step out? Oh, he's right there. Sorry. He keeps stepping out for meetings for work, but my husband and my, and everybody else is working, um, and there's some friends back there too, so I appreciate everybody. Thank you, guys.
All right, family and friends, thank you.
I wanted to, I did want to have some remarks.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to say that it's already been mentioned today, but ten years ago, I did run for, run for the school board against nine people. So we were kind of shysty with each other a little bit because we were opponents, but it all turned in, it all turned into a, you know, a positive energy and we've all became friends, but it wasn't my time ten years ago. And in the last ten years, I have been a substitute teacher in every single building, countless hours of volunteerism. Uh, three of those years I was P T O president, I, at Washington Gifted and at Richwoods twice. I worked for the Peoria Public School Horizons Club. I was a teacher for a few years with our middle school students, speaking about their possibilities, uh, for careers. Um, I also served as a school board member in another district in that time, so right now I feel, I feel like this is my time and I'm more qualified now than I was ten years ago. And also, when you lose to Ernestine Jackson, it's peaceful because I agreed with her. Every single candidate for him, her and I were always on the same page, so when you lose to someone that you respect and admire, it's not a hard loss. There were no tears shed, so, um, and she served our district in a while, God rest her soul. Um, but this morning I was reflecting back to over twenty years ago. I was pregnant with my first child and my husband asked me if I would stay home with our kids, and so we were reconstructing our life, and I decided to become a substitute teacher in two thousand and three, um, to get to know the city where we're going to raise our kids and get to know the schools that my children's will attend. And so, uh, what better way to get to know it than subbing? So it was back in the day, I think the woman was named Debbie, would call me at zero dark thirty and ask me to go, and I went everywhere. She, she loved me because I would never say no and I would never, never say are there any other assignments. I would just go wherever. So I've been in buildings that are no longer open, like Tane, Kingman, Greeley, White, the old Harrison, schools that have been rebuilt now. I remember being in the old ones and I really enjoyed it. And in a matter of time, I got scooped up by Randy Simmons at Calvin Coolidge, who asked me to not have this child so I could stay at the school and help them.
I remember that. I remember that.
So I ended up doing the most work at the very end of my pregnancy with Randy Simmons over there, and also God rest his soul. We lost a good one there, so, um, within a month of being a mother, I was taking my daughter Isabella Anna Stroller to Garfield School to volunteer every Wednesday to redo the kindergartners for the I Like Me program. And that was, Kevin Curtin was the principal at that time. So even when I wasn't an employee anymore, I'd been, I was volunteering, and that was through the Junior League of Peoria. And seven years later, I started subbing again, which would have been twenty-ten, twenty-eleven school year. And so once again, for the past fifteen years, I've been all over the district, every school. And the most proud thing is that my kids have gone through Peoria Public Schools and my daughter, our daughter, um, Isabella, she and our son David, they've both been challenged, they've had grit, they've had amazing teachers, so I fight for our district because I feel like the media likes to say negative things about it and a lot of people who shame on our schools have never been in our schools, their kids don't go to our schools, so I know, and I will advocate that our kids get everything they need to succeed in life because Bella went through and was, she did the gifted middle school and was an I B student, and she actually got the actual I B diploma. And not everybody gets that. Um, she got a presidential scholarship to go to Bradley. I mean, these are things that we are setting up a foundation for, for children in Peoria, and the community needs to know more of that. And right now she's not here because she, she's a Bradley student, but she's, um, she's doing a double concentration on computers, double major concentration with game design, but her major is computer science and user experience design, so right now she's downtown at an internship with Cat Digital.
Nice.
And all that started in our schools, so I'm just really proud as a mom, and my, our son is going to be right behind her. We'll be applying to colleges this fall. He'll be a senior at Richwoods this year, so I just, I'm a cheerleader for the district and I can't wait to start serving the district in a new chapter as a board member, so.
Amen. Well, thank you. And we'd like to, um, have your, um, your, um, experience because it, it really takes that, um, to operate from a, uh, point of, um, experience, knowledge, and more than anything, passion. Um, because you care.
We do care.
So thank you. Any other board members like to share anything?
Just like this, oh, Ms. Coste.
As the elder, elder, how do you say it? The oldest board member, serving board member, and probably the oldest, uh, person around this horseshoe as well. I like to say welcome in any, anything that I, you know, can do or answer any questions for you or help, help you just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yes, Brenda, I, I definitely would like to welcome you. I remember back those years when you would stand at the podium. We didn't always disagree, but we agreed to disagree, to agree, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, and I ran into you, I want to say we were downtown somewhere.
It was Oktoberfest.
Oh, it was Oktoberfest, okay.
We were both, and it was the end of the night, so we were both in real good mood.
Yeah, very good, right. And we had a, we had a conversation at that time, and you had told me that you had served on, um, another school board, which you were no longer doing, and the appreciation that you now had for being a school board member. And I remember that conversation. Um, so with all that, I just want to say welcome and welcome to the board, welcome to the team, and, um, hit the ground running.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I was going to say welcome to the team as well. I'm looking forward to working with you to, um, ensure that our students get the education they deserve and, and, and the advocacy as well, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Brenda, I just want to thank you for, um, doing the hard work of running and, um, being here and being willing to serve and having the, um, experience and the wisdom and the knowledge that you put in, not necessarily knowing that it was going to benefit you when you served, but you put it in and now it will benefit everyone because you did the work, so thank you again.
Thank you.
And Brenda, I'd like to welcome you to the board.
Thank you.
Um, obviously you have an enormous amount of experience. I'd like to tell you, you could draw from my experience, but I have so little of it. So I'll probably be learning from you at the same time, so I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Yes, I just want to say welcome and enjoy your tenure here, and I know you're going to do good work for the kids and you have a really good team.
Thank you.
Um, and as for me, this, I'm just going to close, okay. Um, this past year has been very enlightening. It's been interesting and I've learned a lot. I know I didn't say a lot sitting around the horseshoe, but I'm a very observant person, so I wanted to learn as much as I could before I opened my mouth. And so, um, I did learn a lot. I, I've grown a lot sitting around this horseshoe and I knew a lot of the people on the horseshoe already, um, besides Christina, and Christina and I are really good friends now. We're going to keep being friends. Um, so, um, and then hearing all of the things that you've done for the district, that's amazing. And, um, I'm still working, so maybe in ten years I'll have a, I'll have a, a rap sheet like that, but, uh, as, as far as working within the schools, I'm still there. I just won't be on the horseshoe, so I'll still be in the community, I'll still be in the schools, and I'll still be doing the work, just not around the horseshoe, and I appreciate everyone for, um, everything, so, thank you.
And we want to personally thank you and. Just don't be surprised when we call on you to volunteer and to, uh, uh, assist with your wisdom. And just a note, we do like to lean on all former board members, so Mr. Walter, you are included. Um, and we are working to put something together that we can, that the current board can interact and, um, um, communicate, you know, we'll have a gathering, we'll invite everybody back because we do know that wisdom is in the room and experience is a great teacher, and we look to lead with integrity and with transparencies and sometimes just getting feedback from people from the, uh, you know, community who, um, decided to volunteer and to serve. Being a public servant is not an easy task. And it's good, bad, and it's ugly, but it is a good thing, and so we want to thank you for being here and for, um, supporting Brenda. And Chanel, we just look to see you somewhere in the sphere and just, just don't vacate us, um, because we, um, we have learned a, a lot from, um, you as well, so thank you.
I'd like to say thank you as well, um, Chanel Hargrave Murray. Uh, we've been doing a lot of work throughout the years, um, probably dates back to two thousand twenty-two, maybe twenty-one. Um, but just continue to do good things in the community. I know it's hard, it's hard for her to say no, so if we call on her, she's going to say yes. So appreciate the work and the sacrifice, um, and the time that you put into, uh, serving our students.
Chanel, I did not have the privilege of knowing you before you came on this board last year, but I am so grateful for this year that we spent on the board together, and I'm so glad that despite the fact that you will no longer sit here, um, that you will be doing so many other things for our students, whether it's the House of, um, Runway, like the Peoria Fashion Week, or the Park District, uh, events that you throw, or the, um, A H Y Fair and all the other Expo Garden related things that you were serving on. I'm just grateful that all the countless ways you serve our students throughout the course of your day, every day, um, and all the other ways that you're involved in it, that, that will not stop just because you are no longer with us here, so thank you again.
We were queens together. And so, um, you know, ever since I've known you, I don't know where you get all the energy from, but I, I envy that energy and you've always been a, you know, truthful person and I admire you a lot.
Chanel, this is, um, I, I met you when you came on the board and just to let you know, it's been a joy in working with you. I appreciate the knowledge that you have imparted on this board. Yes, you do not say a lot, so we have something in common. We think about things, we, we regurgitate it and everything, and then we speak. Um, I do appreciate, I have appreciated that. I wish you the best. And yes, um, don't be surprised if we call on you and say, hey Chanel. But again, the best of luck and it's been great.
All right, thank you. All right, our next item, the election of our board secretary, Mrs. Kami Ross, a motion to approve her as secretary?
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary for the role. Yes.
I'd just like to make, you're going to vote right now, correct?
Yes, and you officially vote.
I am, so I, my district email was closed sometime last week, and I've gotten no background information on anything, so I'm not comfortable voting without background information, so I'm going to be abstaining today. I just want to let you guys know.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, and you legally, we can't give you information until you are sworn in. That's just the law. Yeah.
That is totally fine. I just want to make sure you guys know I'm not comfortable voting if I haven't had any background information, so.
Yeah, that is absolutely fine.
It's not personal to anyone here.
Okay, thank you. All right, Madam Secretary for the role. Mrs. Coste. Mrs. Wilson.
Abstain.
Mr. Ivory. Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
President McConnell.
Aye.
We have six ayes, motion carries. Thank you very much. Um, election of officers, that report from Kami? Yes. A majority vote, we have, uh, Dr. Wilson as president.
Second.
We got a motion to, uh, approve.
Second.
Madam Secretary for the role. Mrs. Coste. Mr. Ivory.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Mrs. Wilson.
Abstain.
Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
We have six, I, I'm sorry, President McConnell.
Aye.
We have six ayes, the motion carries. Thank you. The office of vice president. By majority of vote, we have, uh, President McConnell elected, nominated for vice president. Okay, thank you. Um, motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Secretary for the role. Mrs. Coste. Mr. Ivory.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson.
Abstain.
President McConnell.
Aye.
We have six ayes, the motion carries. Okay, at this point I'm going to slide over and let President Wilson handle the rest of this agenda.
Thank you, President McConnell. Um, first I would like to thank President McConnell for her leadership this past year. I humbly accept this important position as board president. I look forward to working collaboratively with board members as we continue to reimagine how edu- education is presented. Uh, as board chair, my vision is of shared leadership, uh, one that emphasizes collaboration with both my fellow board members and Superintendent Dr. Karat. I believe true leadership doesn't rest with one individual. It is strengthened when responsibility, transparency, and accountability are shared across the board. By drawing on the unique perspectives, perspectives and expertise of each member, we enhance both our effectiveness and our ability to serve students. Every board member deserves a voice, a role, and a meaningful seat at the table as we work together to ensure the best outcomes for our leaders. I value all of our students, family, and staff of Peoria Public Schools. Thank you for the nomination and support. Next we have item G. No, what? Can I see? Next we have item G, Appointment of Assistant Board Secretary and Treasurer for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year. Proposed action, that Arlisa Holford be appointed Assistant Board Secretary of the Board of Education and that Abe McWillis be appointed the treasurer for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Okay.
Madam Secretary.
Mrs. Coste.
Aye.
Uh, Mrs. Wilson.
Abstain.
Mr. Ivory.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
Uh, Mrs. McConnell.
Aye.
We have six ayes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item number eight, Adoption of Board Agreement on the Focus of the Work of the Board and Con, and Code of Conduct. Proposed action, that the Board of Education adopt for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, the Peoria Public Schools Board Agreement on the Focus of the Work of the Board and the Code of Conduct.
So moved.
Madam Secretary.
And then might I add that, that, um, form has been sent around and if you will sign it, Mrs. Wilson, and then Mr. Ivory needs to sign.
Has everyone signed it?
Okay, thank you. Madam, okay, I'm sorry. It's been motion and second. Mrs. Coste.
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Ivory.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. President, I'm sorry. Mrs. McConnell.
Aye.
President Wilson.
Aye.
We have seven ayes, the motion carries.
And next we have item number I, Adoption of Board Policies. Proposed action, that the policies of the immediate past board be the policies of the new board.
Motion, so moved.
Madam Secretary.
Mrs. Coste.
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Ivory.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell.
Aye.
Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
We have seven ayes, the motion carries.
Thank you. That is the conclusion of today's meeting. Thank you.